All right, we will open up the meeting. Yeah. For. February twenty first, twenty twenty three. This is being conducted pursuant in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody is recording, that is fine. Just let me know. Okay, we will be recording this and putting it. Online for anybody to view on the webpage for the Southwood Planning Board, seven o'clock P M Town Planners Reports.
Thank you very much, Mr. Care. Okay. You had Mr. Port on tomorrow following the last meeting. I mentioned. Over a number of meetings that I've been coordinating with.
I have unmute. I have.
Mr. Williams Smith regarding his property at seventy nine Moore Divining Road. As you may recall, that's the. That's one of three lots that would be accessed from a common driveway. He doesn't have a. Buildable site, you know, the current bylaws. Through coordination with town administration. I asked that. Town Council coordinates directly. With Mr. Smith, so he could, if you'll truncate the conversations. Town Council reached out to the attorney that prepared an opinion letter, Brad Moore over in Westfield. And essentially said, if you're looking for relief under zoning, you need to file. For variance with the Board of Representatives. Which I think is generally consistent there are limited avenues for, what about action. But anyways, hopefully that. Resonates with the land on that. We submitted for district local practical assistance. Last Monday. With the Fire and Rescue Committee Commission, so there's a brief review process. We've submitted for assistance. Renovating our subdivision regulations. Aligning them with our open space. Our subdivision regulation. And also looking at. Some spatial analysis work. To couple with master plan. Implementation. So to go post master plan work. The dollar value, as I imagine, I think is fairly significant. They typically grant something along the lines of maybe twenty thousand dollars or so to each community that applies. So we'll see if we get a partial, if we get something, and we'll continue to look at other sources of. Funding support. For those, for those elements. Let's see. We have a couple of upcoming discussions to the next meeting. I spoke with Tom Saunders. You may remember him as representative for Energy Development Partners. To the permitting facility on Hudson Drive. There's new technology. Available, and I think the discussion is going to be about utilizing less overall square footage. Of solar panels, but having them be able to follow the sun. Through the seasons and throughout the day for better efficiency. I don't think it's going to change the footprint of the project, but those are some of the rough ideas that Tom shared with us. So on the seventh, we'll have that discussion. The Select Board. As I've reported, is in receipt of a petition for the acceptance of Sawgrass Lane. On March sixth. They will hold a hearing. On regarding their intention to lay out. Sawgrass Lane is public way. It's my expectation that at that meeting day will refer. The matter to the planning board for their recommendation. I've shared that note with Randy Brown as well, because we'd be looking to then. Well, for. His notes regarding the infrastructure. And the satisfactory completion of improvements at the site. So.
What meeting are they doing?
That's, I'm sorry, that's going to be. March sixth. We meet on the seventh. So I figure that's the opportunity for us to at least start the discussion. We have forty five days from referral.
Yeah, but they're trying to, I assume they're trying to put it on the town meeting. So we don't have forty five days.
No, it's forty five days. Other pieces would have to be in motion, and I would expect that our response will come in very short order.
We have, in March, we have the seventh and the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, that's correct. Okay, so I have sent a note over to Town Council, if you will, to again. Very carefully play out these dates and our interactions to make sure that there aren't any lost. It's a bad puzzle. Okay, let's come together, and we'll see what they can do back with any adjustments that's been made.
Right.
All right. I'll mention this now, just in case we have some free time in a few moments. The Master Plan Advisor to the Economic Development Commission. Representative. Amber Bach has designed from that role. They've had an internal discussion to the E D C about having Michael McMahon. Take over that representative role. So when that opportunity is correct for the board to make that motion. We'd look to do so.
Is there a meeting before the next? Is there a master plan meeting before the next planning board meeting?
Yes. I believe we'll meet on the second of March.
That's correct. Do we have, I mean, it's, it's their recommendation, so we just have to take it up, right? We don't have to wait for anything else? So we take it up tonight?
That's correct.
At the end, all right, so let me just.
That's all yours, I mentioned you now. Lastly, if my computers, well, they're not through my computer right now. I did receive. A letter forwarded. By Kent Eggleston. From Lloyd McKnight and Daniel Cross, the eight beach road, budding property to the parking lot, so just south of one forty one Condonmont Road. May I read this aloud?
You can.
Okay, dated February ninth, two thousand twenty three. Regarding that property line between one forty one Congamont Road and eight beach road. To the Southwood Planning Board. This letter is to acknowledge we are aware of the changes to the plans for the inventory between one forty one Conlon Road. Budding my property HB eight beach road in Southwood, Massachusetts. We understand that a three foot retaining wall will be constructed as far as possible from my property line. To the six foot wooden fence atop the wall as close to the wall as possible. Sincerely, sincerely, excuse me, Lori McKnight and Danielle Cross. As we closed out discussions with Mr. Eggleston. At the last meeting, this was the confirmation that we sought, also he perceived would be. Minor project change. That's it for my report.
Okay. Seven oh five public comment. Does anybody have something for the board tonight that is not on the agenda?
I do have a raised hand.
I see it. Go ahead, Joanne. Just name and address first, please.
To win the blank thirty eight Reservoir Road. I just want to express a couple of concerns that I have. About the. Six eighty six College Highway by the Indus Corporation.
That is on the agenda for tonight. The public comment.
Sorry.
Not on the agenda.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have something? For public comment that is not on the agenda tonight?
What do you mean by that? If you have anything that you want to talk about with them? With the south with. What's the number? Now, I think it's the same thing she did the.
All right, so the six eighty.
College Highway.
Six eighty six college.
Say anything about that?
Okay, so six eighty six College Highway is on for a public hearing on the agenda. We will, we will open up the public hearing and during the course of the public. Okay, ma'am, if you wouldn't mind just not interrupting me and you'll get your answer. This is public comments. This is for stuff that is not on the agenda. When we open up the hearing for six eighty six College Highway at seven twenty or thereafter. We will go through and there will be an opportunity during the course of that public hearing. For public comments. I'll open it up for any public comments during the course of that hearing. And the reason we do that is because. When we're considering our decision, it's only things that are said during the course of that hearing that we can consider. So if you said it now. It, it has no use whatsoever in that hearing, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments for tonight that is not on the agenda? Okay. Seven oh six, one fifty nine. Berkshire Avenue. Oh, there we go.
Okay, one fifty nine Berkshire Avenue. I'll just provide the planning board with a quick update. Last meeting. Mr. Hale noted that he requested a coordinate with Randy Brown and I regarding. His analysis and design. As perceived for stormwater management at the site, Randy and I had that discussion, I think it was the last Monday. With Mr. Hale, and so I have a continuous letter. Seeking continuance to March seventh.
Do you guys have something on the?
I'm sorry.
Let me see that.
Sure. The. The path that was, I think, identified the last meeting was to. Have that coordination meeting, make sure that coordination meeting took place prior to today. And then we'd be proceeding. Whether the design work.
All right, so that took place, yes. Do you guys have anything else on the calendar as far as when to talk again, or when the expectation to get stuff coming in?
The. The only timeframe related. And Derek, you're welcome to comment on this if you'd like. The only timeframe related note that was shared that meeting, Randy asked that materials be submitted. Prior to the chosen meeting day, so that he'd have time to digest and provide the board with meaningful feedback.
Okay. All right, so Derek, are you looking and expecting to have those materials? In Randy's hands prior to the next meeting?
I am, yes.
Okay. And. I guess this is initially a question for John, but what's the sense after having that meeting as far as. Where things stand along the line of. Moving to completion.
I think we have. A firm understanding. Of. The complex parameters. That play into stormwater compliance. Site analysis and stormwater design. The. It is. Equally challenging in time to time to take that information and translate it into a set of construction documents. And the way Massachusetts works, this permitting document is just construction document. So I can't speak to the efficiency. If you have concerns about the seventh, I would have no reservations about. Providing additional.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would like to keep it on. I just. Derek, do you, are you having an expectation that? Based on your discussion that we are moving. Toward completion by, you know, the next couple of meetings here?
I would say that's fair. To. To target, once I have the. The drawing drafted up completely here. Over to Randy for his review. I think that. Completes the. The overall. Assignment, the big picture. And from there. Moving into the, I don't want to speak for. The procedures that take place here, but moving to the permit. Phase, I think, is. Attainable. Definitely.
Okay. All right. What is? This is all likely you, so just so you know.
March twenty eighth?
March seventh.
I'd prefer the twenty eighth.
Well, I'm going to put it on the agenda for the seventh, whether it gets dealt with on the seventh or twenty eighth. Also, I'm going to be on trial on twenty eighth, so it's going to be you too. So.
We'll close the hearing someday. Over a year now? How long?
I understand, but there's a, there's a. There's a, there's a compliance or a consent to where, right?
Are they being fined at all?
There. I believe the fines are temporarily suspended. You know, compliance is achieved through applying for and receiving the burner. So no, nothing.
But not within a cert specified period of time.
No, okay, we remain open ended at the moment.
What do we have?
It's got to be a record. I just have a list of the current hearings. I think you knew beyond that.
All right, I'll just put it on for the same, I just put it on for seven oh six, so you can at least touch base on it and see where, make sure that. That. The plans are in, Randy has them. I mean, if they have done a review, we can talk about that, but not then. We can kind of keep it on track for this one eighth and. Hopefully. There's. Progress. All right, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps make a motion to continue the hearing for one fifty nine Berkshire Avenue. To March seventh at seven oh six P M.
Do I hear a second?
Return of the second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Return of the senior, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
All right. Seven twenty, thank you, Derek. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Seven twenty P M, six eighty six College Highway, definitive nonresidential subdivision and stormwater management permit applications. In the industrial restricted zone, public hearing. You have the notice.
This is going to be dangerous.
I just need this, and you can place the whatever you need. You have. A certain, whatever Philippe's going to hold up, you can put on them.
Yes.
Okay. Notice a public hearing Tuesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty three at seven twenty P M and. Via Zoom and in the land use hearing room, four fifty four College Highway. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty one, section eighty one T and under chapter one eighty three and three fifteen of the Town of Southwood bylaws. That the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty first, twenty twenty three at seven twenty P M via Zoom. And in the land use hearing room at four fifty four College Highway, Southwood, Mass, application by. Indus Land Development M A. Comma LLC, there, Mr. Thomas. I'm going to screw this up. I do it every time, Laskalit. All right, for a definitive, nonresidential subdivision and stormwater management permit for property located at six eighty six College Highway Zone Industrial Restricted. The property is shown on current assessors map fifty one parcel ten. Zoom information is provided. The applicant proposes to create a five lot, nonresidential subdivision in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Southwood, chapters one eighty three and three fifteen. Details regarding the proposal may be reviewed by contacting the Town Planner, John Rattard. At his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should, if you are at the time and place designated, Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southwood. Planning Board. Okay. Philippe. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Just name and company, if you could, for the record.
Good evening. For the record, Philippe Cravo of Alavec Associates. I was the project engineer, where there's a proposed definitive subdivision that we will be presenting here tonight. I am here along with the applicants' counsel, Mr. Matt Donahue. Good evening.
Evening.
So we are here to present the application for the nonresidential subdivision. Located at six eighty six College Highway. I believe everyone here is very much aware and familiar with this property. It is located at the corner of Tannery Road. And College Highway, frontage on both. The existing parcel, this parcel is ninety point four acres inside. It is zoned industrial residential, industrial restricted. Industrial restricted. There are a number of wetland jurisdictional areas on the property. They were verified and delineated under an O R A D that was approved back in twenty twenty one. But basically, there is a large isolated wetland on the property here. And a perennial stream named Slab Brook off to the north and east side of the property here. The topography of the land is relatively flat. Let's call it on this sort of plateau area, where it's mainly agricultural or formerly agricultural use. There is an existing residential, dilapidated residential building off of College Highway here. And then a number of existing vines on the property shown by these rectangles here. The property, like I said, the property drops off towards the east, but it's relatively flat up in this area. The, obviously, the agricultural fields have been sort of cleared of any mature vegetation, but there is wooded areas surrounding that. Isolated vegetated wetland and also along the frontage with Tannery Road and portions along College Highway. There is also an existing easement that runs along the north, northerly side of the property here associated with. A cell phone tower that's located here and an easement and access easement that connects to Tannery Road here. So from an existing condition standpoint, that is the property. What we are proposing to do. Or what is being proposed on this property is. I guess just from the get go is that. What is being proposed is a definitive subdivision. It is, there are no specific uses, tenants, or. Sort of anything proposed on any of the lots. This is strictly to create a right of way. Build a road, provide frontage to. Create the access to the new lots. That will be. Carved out of the existing property. So basically, what we have here is a five lot subdivision. There are two lots that will be accessed off of College Highway. These two lots here, lot one and lot two, lot one is five of five point seven nine acres, lot two is about five point seven one five acres. And then we go, and then the remaining three lots will be accessed off of the new. Cul-de-sac. Off of Tannery Road. Showed by this, this right away here. Lots three, three is the largest one, right off of the end of the cul-de-sac. That one is about forty seven point nine acres. Lot four is encompassed this area here, about six point six acres, and then lot five is here about twenty three. Point one acres, one five acres here. So what is being proposed is a about a seven hundred eighty eight foot long roadway. That comes off of Tannery Road. And all the associated utilities. That are, that are available at that location. We have water. Water and electric, wheels. There is no sewer service in either the frontage with College Highway or Tannery Road. And we are proposing a new stormwater management system as part of the construction of the roadway. There are various low point, new low points along the roadway where we will install catch basins. Three water quality unit to a surface basin located at the rear. In between lots three and five here, so surface basin to control the runoff and mitigate for the impacts of the roadway itself. Each one of these lots will be subject to their own, as they get developed. Will be subject to their own special program for site plan review, depending on the use, and they will have to. Sort of provide information for what. Their water demand. The type of septic system they will be using and any stormwater system that they will. Have to incorporate to mitigate any impacts that they're proposing on each one of those individual properties. At this point, we have received a number of. Sort of comments from various town departments. We have responded to Randy Brown's comments over at D P W. We can. If the board wants to do, we can walk through all of his comments. We have also received. Comments from the fire chief. In regard to, I guess, a couple of comments. One was in regards to the water connection and then some. Services for the two lots off College Highway. And I believe, John, there was some correspondence with the police department. In regards to, you know, a stop sign which we have and, and it's like a waiver for the sidewalks or requesting sidewalks with which we have a waiver request. We are, we have submitted a waiver request letter for a number of. Waivers, but you know, they're all, we can walk through that as well. None of them are, let's call it substantial. Nature, they're all pretty dimensional. We can sort of walk through those. There was basically some planned waivers and then some. Other waivers, including the sidewalk waivers, so we can walk through the waiver letter as well. So I don't know how the board would like to proceed at this point, but that's basically it from what is being proposed at this time, which is a cul-de-sac road. That provide access to three lots, two lots will have frontage off College Highway and. Nothing is being proposed upon those parcels at this time. So.
Okay.
Go forward.
Do you have somebody from the other department, from the fireplace?
Oh, yes, those are the all stapled.
Oh, they're all, yeah. So why don't we start with that, and then we'll get into them. D P W comments. Do you have this, Andy?
Sure.
Go on, spring it up. Well. No, that's okay. I'm assuming there may be reference to the plans when we're doing this, so don't worry about it.
Okay.
Um. All right, first, we have an email from Paul Miles. I think I previously mentioned that a stop sign should be included where the development exits onto Tannery Road and any sidewalks that are required by any applicable code or standard things. Is there any proposition for that on? The plan right now, or is that something to be?
John is pulling it, pulling it up now, but we have included a stop bar and sign at the intersection of. The cul-de-sac road with Tannery Road, and then from a sidewalk standpoint, that is one of the waivers that we were requesting.
Okay. All right. And then we have. From the fire chief, which is, I confirmed with Randy Brown that required fires suppression flows would be difficult to achieve based on the proposed single water main from Tannery Road. Given the lot sizes, I predict most buildings will require full sprinkler systems. I would also prefer to see a second entrance onto the site if possible, or at least access to lots one and two from College Highway. And that is. You are.
Yeah, so in order to, so there's two parts there. So the one would be providing, you know, water, the water demand. Associated with the development of each parcel. So at this point, we don't know what is going to be used at those parcels. We have provided a water main to the end of the cul-de-sac. And provided an easement to give access to College Highway in the event that one of, that one of these, whatever gets developed on these lots. Requires additional water flow, that there is an easement along the property line here. To extend and loop the water main. To extend it from the end of the cul-de-sac and tie it into College Highway. And then the other part. That was access to lots one and two. So lots one and two will have frontage on College Highway and access will be provided. Off of College Highway. However, those site plans are developed, where, you know, we don't know where the curb cuts are at this moment, because we don't know who will be developed on those boxes.
Okay. All right. All right, let's get into the D P W. Comments. All right. First. We use it from Randy Brown. Consideration should be given to access. These are from Randy Brown. Uh considerations should be given to access the property via College Highway was better suited for large volumes of traffic. A subdivision with sole access off Henry Road may limit developments that produce high traffic volumes and may also trigger requirement for a traffic study. And incorporation of a traffic signal of the College Highway Tannery Road intersection. The um response uh is as part of the design process, considerations given to access via College Highway. In order to preserve as much frontage along College Highway as possible, the owner preferred a connection at Tannery Road. Should future buyers of the proposed lots have. High traffic generation, they will be required to submit traffic information at the time of their special permit filings and site plan approval. Uh second, um. The applicant shall be required to maintain any stormwater systems that are not within the right of way in perpetuity through a homeowner association or similar means. This shall include the drain along the drainage easement and the detention basement. And the response is understood. Three, the town has standardized on the base saver, base separator to treat stormwater. This plan shows the Barracuda Max Water Treat, Water Quality Treatment Unit. The town will maintain the treatment device as long as, one, it is the base separator, two, it remains within the right of way, and three, the subdivision is accepted as a town road. Uh response, the proposed water quality unit has been updated to the base separator. Um that one and two K unit, um one slash two K unit. Uh sizing calculations are shown in the revised stormwater report. All right, um. Yeah, thank you. Based on the grading, uh four, based on the grading plan runoff from Tannery Road will flow into the proposed catch basins near the intersection. Clarify whether runoff flows from Tannery Road were considered in a stormwater calculation to revise if necessary. Uh the response is the intersection grading detail on sheet D one of the plan set shows a high point near. Station zero plus zero zero of the. New roadway that will maintain the Tannery Road gutter line and prevent runoff from reaching the subdivision catch basin. Hold on, someone is trying to. Fully understand. Okay. All right, five, the applicant will be required to post a stormwater bound, a bond that the amount shall be deter, to be determined, understood. Is that response? Six, the stormwater report notes that nineteen borings and twenty four test bits. Were conducted on site. However, only three test pit logs were included. With the stormwater report, please provide copies of the remaining boring logs and test pit reports. Uh those were provided. Seven, catch basin hoods shall be the eliminator to match town standards. Please update the precast concrete catch basin C T style detail on sheet D three to reflect the standard. It has been updated. Eight. The applicant should provide water projection demands in accordance with bylaw three fifteen twelve C two. Response, no end users have been identified at this time and therefore any water projection estimates would be subject to change. As stated in the response to comment nine below, accommodation for a future water main loop to College Highway has been provided. Uh nine, the plans include a dead ended eight inch water main off Tannery Road and small services less than two inches. In size, two lots, three, four, and five. Tannery Road is fed by an eight inch water main that dead ends at the town line. Water demand projections were not provided, but it's likely that future tenants will require high water demands and or require buildings with sprinkler systems. The applicant should loop this subdivision water main to College Highway as opposed to a single feed off Tannery Road. There is a larger water main on College Highway with higher available flows than the main on Tannery Road. Single eight inch connection to the main off Tannery Road will not accommodate development that. Requires large water demands and or require sprinkler systems in the buildings. Response, a stub at the end of the cul-de-sac and associated easement to College Highway has been provided. The water will be looked as requested so the demand of users require it. Ten, the proposed water main and drainage are shown in a very close proximity to each other. In particular at stations uh three plus seventy and five plus forty five. These utilities should be shifted to provide ten feet of horizontal separation where possible. Response, the water and drain lines have been shifted to provide additional horizontal separation at the locations noted. Uh eleven at station seven plus zero zero. The water main design shows a ninety degree bend and one T. This should be simplified with just one T and reducers where necessary. Response, the water length, water line configuration has been revised to show a forty five degree bend near station six plus seventy five. Hydrant T at station seven plus oh five and additional valve and stub at station seven plus fifteen. To allow for the future extension of the main to College Highway as necessary. Okay. Uh twelve, the hydrant shown at station three plus forty should be relocated to station two plus sixty to be installed at the high point of the road. Uh it has been relocated. Thirteen, consideration should be given to connecting to the municipal sewer system along the rail trail, which is approximately a thousand feet east of this parcel. This would require an easement through abutting property. Response, given the cost associated with such a length. Uh so that means with such a lengthy sewer extension and need to acquire an easement across the abutting property. Connecting to the existing municipal sewer system. Uh is not feasible. Uh fourteen, the application states that gas will be provided to the subdivision. However, gas is not shown on the plans. Please clarify and update the plan showing the proposed gas main if applicable. Any gas need should be addressed upfront with every source. Uh response, reference to a gas service connection was erroneously referenced in the application. There is no gas main. Tannery Road and an extension from College Highway is not proposed. Only the frontage parcels along College Highway will have gas service available. Fifteen. The applicant requested a waiver to install sidewalks on both sides of the road. DPW is amenable to this request. If approved, the applicant shall deposit funds into the sidewalk. Revolving account for the value of any sidewalks not installed. The amount shall be determined. Uh responses understood. Uh sixteen, per bylaw three fifteen twenty six. Shade trees should be planted on both sides of the road. The plans show shade trees being planted only at the end of the cul-de-sac. Shade trees should be planted along the entire length of the road. Further, the shade trees should be planted at ten feet off the property line. Uh and responses that they will be planted as requested and are shown on sheet C four. Seventeen, the applicant shall provide a third party inspector to monitor construction and provide inspection reports to the town in accordance with bylaw three fifteen dash ten point one B and C. Response understood. Eighteen, considering the expected heavy truck traffic for a commercial subdivision, the road thickness shall be increased from four inches. Thick to five inches thick. Three inch base and two inch surface. Response, uh bituminous concrete paving detail has been updated to provide the recommended pavement thicknesses. Nineteen, DPW recommends reducing the road width from thirty feet to twenty six feet that matches the town standard for local roads. Response, due to the industrial nature of the subdivision and potential for larger vehicles utilizing the roadway, thirty foot width was proposed. Twenty, uh the applicant shall install and maintain an anti-trafficking pad to minimize dirt and debris from being carried into the road during construction. Understood, it is not shown on sheet C three. A note, um is shown on sheet C three. Um twenty one, the applicant shall secure a demolition permit prior to demolition, demolishing the house. The existing house and barns, water service for the house should be cut and capped at the main on College Highway. Response is understood. Uh twenty two, curb cuts for driveway access and utility connections for lots one and two on College Highway will require uh mass D O T approval and that is. Understood. Okay. Philip, anything to add to that?
Uh, nothing more than, you know, it's typical to any process that when we receive comments. We respond, we provide a response that are update the plans. And sort of back and forth with the town, um you know, DPW department and various departments for that matter. And so we're working with Randy Brown to address all those comments.
Okay. Um, anything from the board at this point in time? Questions, comments?
Oh, yes. Please. It won't be as much as the DPW. Letter, but.
Oh, twenty one?
Yes. Yeah, only six questions, probably. Uh, the name of this development is Southwick Business Park. Correct? And that doesn't conflict with any other name in Southwick?
I don't believe so, but I can certainly check.
I don't know what Hudson Drive development is called. Might be industrial park and not business park. I think that's right. Uh, I did look at your submission as far as the narrative. I was a little surprised that. The narrative for this project is only three pages long. And there's not a lot of discussion of. What could potentially go here? Uh, it's in the IR zone and the way our bylaws are set up. We can go all the way back to the business zone as to allowable uses. So we've got a really broad range of. Activities that could occur on this property, so uh I would have liked to seen a little more discussion. As to the range and what you were intending. Possibly as far as the developer. And the types of uses you would want to have come on to this property. Obviously, the one, the two lots along College Highway. Would be good to develop for, you know, something, some business that require or is based on some higher traffic. Such as a uh grocery store or a. You know, gas station, whatever, possibly. But the ones in the back. Uh could be anything, really. Could be a warehouse. Could be uh some kind of a processing, manufacturing, research facility. Uh whatever, so.
The office could be.
Uh, you know. It it's a little hard to kind of look at it from the broad and perspective and say, what is this? You know, with a residential subdivision, we know it's going to be single family homes. They're going to generate a certain amount of traffic per house. They're going to consume so much water and other services, but this is kind of a uh. A blank slate here. So I think in the narrative, I would have liked to seen a little more discussion. As to, you know, what might. Be some of the uh future owners of this property.
If I might address, um we would like that information as well. Um the reason why this, the this um. Subdivision is being proposed is because the current owner hasn't had much luck in marketing and selling this property as one big parcel. The realtors that are involved have suggested that it might be a lot better and a lot easier and more palatable to a purchaser. If they weren't looking at ninety something acres all at once and the the gravity of a ninety acre parcel. Um so that's why um we have started down this process. Process to have more marketable pieces that could be hopefully. Uh more interesting to end users. We don't know who those end users are. We do understand that the size of the parcels. And the the majority of what we believe the proposed uses would be, or the majority of the uses that would be permissible. Would uh trigger a special permit process anyway, so we believe that. There there's going to be another bite at the apple for the end users. Right now, we're just trying to make this something that is marketable. Or more marketable than it has been in the past.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing you didn't include at all in the narrative, eh, oh, some kind of a uh traffic. Projection or analysis, that that's the one that's, to me, of great interest as far as the intersection of Tannery Road. And College Highway. We have been, pardon the pun, we have been down that road a little bit. Uh back in two thousand seven, when Tractor Supply developed their property. Uh we worked out an arrangement where they deposited thirty five thousand dollars. Towards the purchase or installation of a traffic signal. And it was stipulated the money would be held for five years. And then after five years, if the signal had not been started or whatever installation. The money would be given back. So needless to say. No signal ever happened. But the way this is laid out with the cul-de-sac and all the traffic from those back three lots. Or much of it flowing out to Tannery and to that intersection. Seems to me there needs to be some kind of a discussion or analysis as to. What is going to be the impact on that intersection? There's four landowners, all different landowners. Mister Wally, Mister De Palma, Tractor Supply, and then Indus. So you've got four parties to uh kind of get involved in some kind of a. Discussion or analysis. And the other thing to project or to think about. Is that we're hoping there'll be a connection between Sam West Road and Hudson Drive. So that would help if they, if these back lots are heavier manufacturing. Uh or higher traffic volume generating. They would be able to go out that way if they're eastbound, so they wouldn't have to come through the center of town, center of town. So anyway, uh, I guess that's my third item. Uh. The only other two, one was, are we expecting something from the board to help? Or they would defer?
The the board of health. Uh, if I may, Mr. Trump?
Yeah.
Okay, uh I did check with the new health agent to ensure that the board of health. Both received the information um and had the opportunity to comment on it. Um he notes that this uh took place shortly after submittal. Um all, and although. Uh, no discussion on the topic was reflected in the minutes. Um the verbal uh indication is that they did not have specific concerns. Okay. In any event, time period has lapsed for their comment.
The only other item, at least at this point, is the tree planting, uh the tree plan. And one of the drawings that I saw today just had the trees planted. On the east side of the road and around the cul-de-sac. And looking at the orthophoto, you can see that there's a lot of trees as you come in to the development, so. I would go, in some ways, go back to what that plan is. Uh that I saw earlier today.
The original.
And just require, you know, actual tree planting where there are no trees, because. If there's trees there, I would think you'd probably want to maintain them rather than to cut a corridor through there. But, you know, you've got DPW asking, and you know, we're thinking maybe a different way.
Yeah. Uh depending on how that property, the use of that property gets laid out. That would certainly be an option to maintain some of the existing trees. Like I think that's what you're trying to get at is. Keep some of the trees that are existing there versus having to plant.
Yeah, that one lot there is is. Hundred percent wooded, I guess.
Yeah, this one, this one we're trying to maintain. In any case, because that's the hundred foot bumper kind of comes almost up to the roadway there. So probably, we wouldn't go inside there anyway, it'd be sort of toward the rear here.
Okay.
Once you're into the.
Yeah. Well, that's still something I think to be finalized. That's it for now.
Okay. Uh, any other board questions or comments? One quick question, and I appreciate the fact you put the plan overlaid on the satellite view. If I'm reading it right, it looks like the stormwater catch basin is pushed all the way to the back towards the. Up there.
Yes.
I think.
Right, 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 this.
Yeah, square.
Yeah.
Down there. Is there a particular reason why it was pushed back that far and is it possible to relocate it in a place that's currently open? Um, near the woods out there?
It's cited there because it is outside of the jurisdictional area, so that goes up to that two hundred foot riverfront area. Which is associated with conservation, um jurisdictional area associated with Slab Brook. Um and the topography is lower, is lower back there because it is quite. A long run, we want to maintain as much usable area on towards the front of the parcels and. Located in the back, the basin back here, but this is where um the topography. Starts to sort of drop. Starts to sort of drop off, is that tree line elevation?
Yeah. But doesn't it slope down? For the south?
It kinda slopes. It all slopes this way.
It doesn't also slope down to the south when you get down to the south of the property? To the, uh, well, I thought the bottom was south, but maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
Well, south, north is.
Okay, so when you get down to the bottom, south of the property.
Here?
Yep, isn't that side? Isn't that south side of the property?
It all kinda goes this way.
I like turn on the topography.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to.
You can really come in on it, I can show you. Here with your system condition plan that had the elevation going. Um, two forty-four, two thirty-seven, so this is, this is sloping this direction. Thirty-nine, thirty-eight, there's a small proportion, I guess, it's like it has a small corner kinda. But when we're proposing the roadway, you know, two. Get a better idea of how that tree line, basically, there's sort of like a access path that runs along the, the face of that tree line. And that basically. Starts some of the topography that trails off the edge of it. And then we see it with the, um, existing condition.
Alright. Um, anything else on the board?
Mike?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Are these lots? Set in concrete or are they just? Ideas and, for example, if the gentleman buys lot two, it's five acres, can he make it twelve acres instead? Are these bounty lines set?
Plan approval, so no, it would be, um. Well. Let's put it this way, it would require. A change to the site plan approval, so, um, the permit. As issued would. Be for those. Lots as. Designated, but.
I guess once. You know. It comes down to area in frontage at that point, so what if that was to, to. Get sold, if they had the area in frontage for the zone. They could be able, they, they would be able to A and R, maybe split it up, I'm not sure. Oh, it's not what's, that's certainly not what's being proposed here, but. Um, if somebody. Had the area in frontage. Then they could certainly. Change.
Um.
Their property size.
Okay, so bounty lines could be changed. If you came back to the board, but with a change of plans. If a customer came in and wanted a bigger lot or a different lot size, totally.
Not on the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac. Sets the right of way, sets the frontage. Within the subdivision. Portion of the property. For example, this large parcel only had the frontage along the, you know, the end radius.
No, that's. So just saying, for example, a lot four cannot expand until. And take over some space from lot. Three?
If the internal property lines, it would have potential to change in the future. Through the, through A and R process.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah. I guess I gotta think for when that would have to occur. Um.
Post definitive. Reporting. Uh, you know, reporting. Um. Then, you know, then, then the lot is formally created. As with it, with its own separate deed.
Yeah, no, okay, alright. Alright. Um. Any other, uh, anything else on the board?
Yeah. A little bit, um. I can appreciate why the applicant doesn't have. Specific detail. Um, but I think that. Knowing what these parcels are potentially going to become, that we can anticipate that any additional traffic from these five lots. Are going to. Cause a bigger problem at the Tannery Road intersection, which we already have identified as a failing intersection. So. I truly feel like that. Issue needs to be addressed here and not waiting until each individual applicant comes in for the special permit. Simply because then we're going to be relying on them to self-identify what percentage of the intersection is going to be their problem. We're doing this so that the applicant can make these lots more marketable. Having that issue already decided and handled. I think will make them more marketable. Um. That also ties into my concern with lots one, uh. Three, the ones that are on College Highway.
One, one and two.
One and two, especially the idea that lot one and two don't have any proposed curb cuts, we're talking about a very. Busy intersection with a lot of curb cuts already there, not talking about Tannery Road, just the. Multiple entrances to the dollar store, the business that's next door to that. Uh. You know, Tractor Supply, and then you're gonna add in two additional curb cuts for two potentially high-traffic, smaller business locations, whether they're. Fast food or some small, uh, retail establishment. They're gonna be causing a lot more interplay with ten two oh two. After a major curve where people fly. Pretty fast coming after Westfield River Brewery. Um, my other concerns lie in, I think, the DPW concerns regarding the water mains and the sewers. Um. I think it's really unlikely that. Especially on the three larger parcels, that you're gonna have users coming that aren't going to require. A higher level of water pressure as Randy identified, especially with sprinkler systems, and that we shouldn't. Uh, wait until that point in time to say, okay, we're not gonna screw up Tannery Road's water pressure, they just had new developments going in over there. Uh, I don't want to affect those residential neighborhoods with a diminished water pressure when the plan is already kind of prepared. For a college highway connection, um, I think that should be done. Ahead of time so that we're not fighting it down the road as individual applicants come through. Um. Yeah, and then potentially that also triggers my concern that the cul-de-sac itself. Is coming off of Tannery Road, we had heard in previous applications, but. It's easier for an applicant to get a curb cut and permission off of Tannery versus off of College Highway. And state permitting and all that. But again, if we're talking about reducing curb cuts for lots one and two, perhaps having a main road coming in off of College Highway. Uh, could alleviate those two. Issues as well as take industrial traffic off of January Road, which is something I think most residents would like to see happen. So. Think that's. All happening.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, if you want to respond then.
Yeah, I, I, just to respond to some of those, um, with regard to the traffic lights, again, we do not know, we have no idea who these end users are gonna be.
I would say anybody more than two people walking in the door is going to cause that failing intersection to. Be even more failing, so. I think that's kinda doesn't really matter.
Fine, I understand your concern. That is a, a state highway is my understanding, and, and that any of the regulations with regard to the. Uh, the light itself would have to go through Mass DOT. Uh, same thing with regard to curb cuts, I think that. That, uh, even DPW is gonna be preempted by the rules and regulations that are set forth by Mass DOT. So I don't know whether or not that is. Truly, I know it is a town issue. But I think that that would. Happen automatically when. The deep, uh, curb cut application happens, you apply from Mass DOT, there's another meeting, there's another hearing. With regard to that, because they're the ones who regulate that roadway. Um.
I wouldn't want to approve, uh, to approve a subdivision though, that's going to then run into a brick wall at DOT that says, okay, so now we're adding. Two more additional curb cuts to this already busy road and there's no plans, I don't know, I can't speak for Mass DOT, but. You know.
My experience with, with Mass DOT is, is, you know, in something like this, sometimes they suggest that there's one larger curb cut in between the two lots. So, and then the access is truly off of a driveway or a common driveway, so that there is one curb cut instead of. Two or three or four, but those, I, I'm not in a position to tell Mass DOT what they can and can't do. And, um, we, we're gonna be bound by whatever Mass DOT says. Um, I don't know if we have any control over that. Um. You know, if anybody else has any suggestions, I don't, I don't know that we can control that. Uh, as the developer, I just don't think that we have the ability to do. Um.
Well, you know, I, I would just, I mean, I would just say to that, you do, you're putting in an application with Mass DOT and the application is proposing something, so. There is some control over what you propose.
Absolutely, and there's input from Mass DOT that would take place as well, um, but again, until we have a, an end user, we don't know. What the. Their requirements are, that end user's requirements were, and if the lot is sold before it's developed, which we. That's the plan here, we're not, uh, as far as the designer here is not planning on developing any of these lots for. A, as an end use, they want to sell these lots, they wanted to sell it as one large parcel, that didn't happen. Again, it's, th- this is a means for us to, to, um. Be out of that area where we don't have, or, or my, my client doesn't have a use for that property right now. Um, so they wanna sell it, we tried to sell it as a large parcel. And that didn't work, we want to try to sell it. And it's been suggested that it would be, uh, more marketable as, um, some smaller parcels that are more manageable for. For the types of businesses that we think would. Would be suitable in that area. So again, it's hard for us to say what the traffic requirements would be or wouldn't be. Um, with, without knowing what the end user is, if, if it's a small machine shop and there's. Five guys that are working there, that. Would be permissible and it wouldn't have hardly an impact at all, I understand that that intersection is not a good intersection to begin with. But it wouldn't have much of an impact by. Uh. Traffic study standards.
Which is why I kinda want to get the question answered now before it's, well, I'm just the small machine guy. Next to the big industrial, so I shouldn't have to put any money towards this, the traffic, right? I think. That's, that's my big concern is that you guys want to subdivide this to get out from the pressures of the big applications, but then it's. Putting on us in the town to really parse out all those different pieces and gives them the opportunity to say, well. It's not really our responsibility, so we're, we're looking to make sure that we're not approving a definitive subdivision where we lose that control. And the ability to make sure that. Issues that are already in existence. Are going to be addressed appropriately.
So would, would, would it be the, the proposal that, that would be a cost that's shared by all the businesses that are in that area that are, are adding to the drive?
I don't have the proposal, but I would like to see one.
So Bill, just to add to this discussion that. Each one of these, and I know this is kind of reiterating what we already said, but each one of these will be required to come back. And at that point, whether that parcel gets. Approved or not, will be determined whether, you know, the traffic study at that time. Indicates that intersection needs to let, in, in addition to that, I think. Um. It was said that Sam West Road was getting connected over to Hudson Drive. And that would potentially add some. Additional traffic to this area, so, you know, where, where do you draw the line as to who's responsible for the act of. Traffic.
What we need to know, I think, before we would approve something, we have to have some. Range. Of understanding.
Right.
As to volume. Uh, I mean, I think we need to have some. Third party look at this and give us an opinion. As to the potential impact. Of traffic.
I mean, the other part about it that I guess I need to think about some more is. The level of. Application that needs to come in by an end user is gonna vary depending on the type of business. Um. If it is. A use that requires a special permit, they're gonna have to go through the special permit process. Suppose if it's a use that needs certain requirements for the major development, you're there, you'd have to go through that. But if it's a use that is permitted in the. In either the business zone or in the industrial zone. All they have to submit is a site plan approval and I.
There's only two businesses allowed.
That's not, that's not in that, not.
Industrial.
In the, in, in the.
In the industrial restricted zone, it's booked by. That's all it's about.
Almost everything's a special permit.
No, no. Everything's special permit.
This. Is, is it, is it one or two, is it? No, it runs, oh no, it is. Hold on. I'm just trying to think through whether there's. Yeah, I'm trying to think through whether there's anything that could get by without having a full. Site plant or without full special.
alignment.
Book binding.
What's binding? I, I have a.
Oh, I suppose. In the IR zone, so many of those going in. It's a very good business, I'd like, if we could get one, it would be excellent.
Is that the only one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not much allowed by right in the IR.
There, yeah. I just can't, I, I, I think of the bank with the business restricted, but I can't remember the IR.
Yeah.
Um.
Book binding.
Alright, so. If anything has to come in. Other than book buying. Or. Special permit and site plan approval. I mean. You're, you're. I don't think I. I, I think I. Appreciate the position you're in, but I think you. Are. And maybe you get around one and two. Because those are potentially coming off a college highway. But. Three, four and five, I mean, it strikes me, I just gotta think through how. This plays out with the applications, three, four and five, whoever comes in first. Is gonna be burying the brunt of. The issue, I mean, i- it's, it's, it's almost a poison pill that you're not necessarily gonna be able to. You're never gonna get to four and five because you can't get past the first one. Um. And that to me, you know, I got, and I'm weighing whether that's our issue or your issue, but. At some point, this is gonna come up and it's not gonna come up as a, you only have five cars or ten cars or whatever it is, it is gonna be the reality of. Where you are. And what you need and. Someone's gonna hit that and I, I don't. I don't know, I don't know whose issue that is, but.
Alright. To your argument though, um, so your, your argument was basically there, there are protections that are put in place with regard to the, the bylaws. And if we're meeting the standards that are put forward for the bylaws. By your bylaws for a subdivision. Then. Then we're meeting those standards. Um, some of these things are outside of those. Right now, as far as subdivision is concerned. As far as end user, I believe that you're correct that. You're gonna have that opportunity at, at, for that, but right now, as far as subdivision is concerned, I don't know if that. Is on the table yet.
Well, the, our subdivision law requires that. Um, we look at these and we should exercise our regard for the provision of adequate access. To all the lots in the subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel, for lessening congestion in such ways. And in the adjacent public ways for reducing danger to life limb in the operation of motor vehicles. For securing safety in the case of fire, flood, panic and other emergencies, so I would disagree. That the subdivision law doesn't. It allow us to look at traffic and safety.
Is it that you're? I mean, ultimately, it is a prime issue here because you're requesting a waiver for it.
Waiver.
Don't you, how about, how, don't you, aren't you requesting a waiver about providing a, hold on.
A traffic?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm not sure again, we run through the waiver list, but I believe.
Maybe I missed it, maybe I was thinking of something else, but. I thought there was something about. Um. About. Well, maybe I guess it's just with the, it's with the locations.
My understanding is that the trend studies are usually tied to an end user where it is a known. Where you can calculate, because a traffic engineer can't calculate if they don't know what the end user is, they use tables and. In my experience, they use tables and charts that are associated with different. They use tables and my experience, they use tables and charts that are associated with different businesses, like. The size of the business, the square footage, the the type of business that it is. Um, that's how they determine what the traffic flow on and off that property is going to be, and that's how they determine. But I I I mean.
So, yeah, and I I guess I'm reading a little bit into it. You do have to show the general location of buildings and driveways and pavements and all that kind of stuff. And so that usually ties into how many vehicles are going to be parking spots and whatever else is going to be needed. So I guess I'm reading into it a little bit, but. Um.
We already have traffic studies that say this is a.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, one of the problems, I guess, that you're facing is, right, is that we're dealing with a known entity right here that has already come up. And we already know the traffic issues that that are associated with that area. And so. It's a bit of. I I I don't, I I trust me, I I appreciate your position, which is I'm not sure how you do a traffic study. When you have no idea what the end user are going to be and. Uh, you know. Um. But it's not. I guess there's probably assumptions you can make and there's probably ranges that you could give and you could give something, I suppose. But it's a difficult ask. I I fully understand that. But at the same time, I also understand what the traffic issues that exist coming off of that property are. And it seems like a just a. A problem that is just being kicked down the road. It's, I mean, it's going to have to get dealt with at some point. Uh, again, I I'm struggling as to whether that's our issue now or whether.
I I would.
It's your issue as a, as, not your, but your client's issue as a developer.
End user who who's going to be coming in and saying that we're expecting a hundred truck trips per day. And that that our uses as a warehouse and the warehouse is, you know, a relatively transient warehouse. Where there's going to be a lot of volume coming in and a lot of volume coming out. And then you can calculate and say, oh, you're going to be changing the whole dynamic of this intersection right now. Our proposal is to basically put in a cul-de-sac and everything is staying exactly the way it is. That's our proposal. We're hoping that we do sell this off, but that's going to be something that the end users are going to have to address. Because they're the ones who are impacting that. We're not impacting that intersection at all right now. By just doing the subdivision, there is no impact to that intersection at all. Zero.
No, and I'm, I guess what I'm trying to do is just think through and and sort of. Game theory out all the things that need to come down the line, right? And so this is a very, very simplistic. Plan, and I get what you're trying to do, but I mean theoretically, depending on what is going in there, you may have to change. Um, you know, that accessway on on tannery, um, even if it's just to expand it. Uh, clear out trees and do whatever that needs to be done for sight lines and whatever. I mean, there may be a bunch of stuff you have to do there. You may have to, um, you know, a- adjust the plan in in a number of different ways, depending on what's going to go in there. So it. It just seems like it's, I don't know, I guess we just never had that in front of us, where we're talking about a very. Simplistic proposal that needs a lot to be filled in. Um, and just just making sure we have control over those details of the filling in later on. And how we do that, I I. Yeah, I guess that's the issue we're wrestling with is whether we 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 are not. I guess I think everybody wants to make sure they're not giving up control over those details later on by doing anything now.
And I understand, I I I truly do, but. Our position, just to restate our position is that the subdivision itself, just dividing out these. The the big lot into a bunch of smaller lots doesn't do anything to change any of the traffic flow anywhere. It just doesn't. It's not until an end user comes in and proposes that they're going to turn, you know, lot one into a gas station. Or or a lot two is going to be a grocery store. Then we can, we have a definitive and we can say, hey, hold on, there is going to be a significant traffic input. And we're going to require a traffic study be done to make sure that there's not going to be. A a significant increase in the impact to that intersection. I get that, but if this is a small manufacturing and this is a small manufacturing. And this is a small manufacturing and this is a small manufacturing and this guy just wants to have. A a small manufacturing with a lot of land, there's really. The impact on this intersection is going to be minimized, if not almost de minimis. Where if this turns into a large warehouse with a hundred truck trips per day or two hundred truck trips per day. Obviously, that has a significant impact on us. And and likewise, if this is another one, then again, you're talking about an even more significant. We get that, but that's not something that we can project because we don't know it. We have no idea who these end users are going to be. We can tell you that our proposal right now is that it's not going to be one large user.
Yep.
That's the only thing we can tell you. We're just trying to sell the property.
Alright, anything else from the board, bro, open it up. Okay, uh, any public officials have questions or comments?
Doug. Good afternoon, Doug Muggen, Vice Chair, Board of Slapman. Great presentation, very thought provoking to the question at hand. And um, I'm not going to pretend I have the answer, but you, I think you see both sides of the question here is. One is you have to plan for the highest and most intense use on those five lots. And the impact on on the land and on tannery road. And then the other is the other opposite of that is de minimis, or we're just going to put a subdivision road there, but that. The subdivision road puts no cars on the street. The answer lies somewhere in the middle, and I think this analogy runs, um. You know, it would be the same as saying we're going to build a runway and then, but we don't think, you know, those don't make any noise, so you put the planes on there. But at the same time, this is a little bit analogous to what happened with Tractor Supply. Tractor Supply, we knew the user. We didn't know the user on the other side. So the agreement was that the applicant at the time was going to deposit money in escrow. And if the traffic tripped the threshold for additional construction or control of that intersection. That it was going to be expected that the other applicant would commit funds to that. Uh, escrow to construct the signal at that intersection. As it turned out, that land is was never constructed um to what the intended use was at the time, which was going to be another road three. And. The 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 time passed and the applicant was entitled to, I did ask for and receive back their mon- their funds that were in escrow. This is a special permit application in front of the planning board. That certainly within the purview of the planning board to require some deposit to an escrow. Towards a future traffic study within a, you know, defined period of time. And if and if if then the development does create an impact on the intersection, then you're you're, you know, you're covering your bases. Uh, the other minor technical point, and I think probably someone could answer it as well is. I don't think once you approve the definitive plan, that you can do an A and R on a definitive plan until a town has accepted the way. And that's why then it, it you can't take, you can't take frontage off a private way. Because you don't have, you don't have access off a public way. So if it went to town meeting and we accepted the way, then you could do an A and R. In the other, in the interim, maybe, but you would have to come back in front of the planning board for a modification of the definitive. If you were going to shift the lot around. That's just just my opinion and town council would probably give you the absolute answer, but off the top of my head, that's I think how, yeah.
Or we we might have had to deal with that at the ranch and it may still be percolating, so.
Correct, so, correct. Anyway, thanks very much. Appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, uh, any other town officials who have comments? Just make sure there's no one.
No.
Okay, um, any public comments? And I'm going to start in person and then we'll go on to Zoom. Uh, any.
We're going to have to have him come up because he won't be able to hear it.
Yeah, if you got, so, um, if you could just come up just so that we can hear it better, whoever's going to speak first, um, and just state your name and address if you could. You don't have, you can sit, you don't have to sit, but it's up to you.
Well, we got to come up because it's. They're being recorded, so for posterity.
I'm Clifford Wolf, uh, Westfield, Mass. I have the property that butts that bigger section. My concern is, I'll talk about easements. I have an easement off a college highway to get to that property through your property. Along that wood line.
There's a.
Right along here. I just want to make sure that's there. I'm selling it if that one lot fits. So I don't lose it.
A- a- anything that's on the on record at the.
The last time when the other project started. Company didn't do what you do with it and look at the deeds. But it's in the original deed, my family bought that property. And I had conversations with them about it. So, and I do have a right way up a college highway and I agree the traffic. Is a pain getting in and out of that field, coming out, because right now, there's a lot of traffic that come out. Your driveway where the houses by the tobacco barn, that's the only way I can get out on college highway. The second house rather slow and traffic goes franking by there.
So where is your property? It's in the.
Our seventeen acres.
Eighteen acres. Well, we're down here.
There isn't existing.
Yeah, I come in on your property and you go all on ours.
Does that show them, please?
So that, so I just, I just want to make sure that my family in the future doesn't have a problem in that property. Whenever it happens.
It it's already noted on the plans.
Yeah.
I I am not the attorney who did the title work, uh, but I can check and make sure, but if it's on the plans. That means if somebody's already identifying it as an easement.
And it's on the conversation with, uh, Levek and Carvana. At the same time, because Levek told me the land would be land lack at that time. I said, no, you better do your research. So I just want to make sure that it was done. And so my family can continue to have access to that property and. I just want to know what's going to happen to that bigger section because it's going to impact me as a landowner there.
So I can tell you this, I mean, one is, I'm assuming that the the. Uh, is it easement or right away or whatever?
Yeah, right away. Uh, because we have a curb cut off the college highway already.
Uh, or whatever it is, is is listed in the deed for that property would be my assumption, and so. Um, and as well, it's it's in, it's on your deed and it's on that deed. Um, and so I that's, I'm assuming that's the case, so you can make sure that's the case. Um, but it sounds like they've figured it out, at least from here, whether through your involvement or otherwise. Um, but. As a property owner, if they come in for a special permit. Um, you're going to be in a butter and you're going to get notice of that special permit application and you can come in. Review the plans and do whatever else, you know, make comments and do whatever else you need to do, um, if there is a special permit application for that property.
Yeah, I mean, I just wondering if you have the, where the waters, most of the water is going to go toward the back, over the bank. From what you were talking about.
So, um, right now, we only have, we we're mitigating for the roadway with a pension basin back here.
Right.
So none of, none of this area is being worked during at this moment.
Yeah, I just. It's not going to affect those.
I mean, but the only, it's it's at this point.
Well, before it did, over the years, no, no, before they leveled that lot, because it used to have a crown in it. Years ago. When it was tobacco, it well, it had a crown in it, but then. I think, uh, Calipres just came in and leveled it, made it flatter, got rid of the dips in there so they could plant more crops. So all that water used to come across the field. And down into the our drainage that goes across the field.
So what, as it exists, as it exists right now? If they come, if they, you have a water problem now?
No.
Okay.
No.
So if they come in and they put something there, they're going to have to make it so that it doesn't change that existing. Situation.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's a simplification, but that's essentially what it is. Um, and so, um, now, I mean, I just want to just be careful because I think you're right, that there is no. Nothing going down there right now.
Right.
But if they propose something on there that is going to require some stormwater management. There may very well be something constructed down there to deal with that. It, again, it's still designed to keep the situation as it is now.
Right, that's the way it should be.
So, um, so there may be something, you know, stormwater related down there, but the design is going to be to keep your land. In the same place it is right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we have access to what that is. I see the simple things there, so that's. Yeah, your field goals, our property goes on an angle, even though that shows it going. It's down here, our corner is down here in the woods. And our other ones, yeah, I can see the line right here, it's up here on the other side of the road. Goes on an angle that shows it going this way, but actually goes like that. And we've had problems with the people that rent that land, they keep coming on ours. And I've got word with them. Yeah, and I just don't, I'm just, I'm a little tired of that.
Then potentially a subdivision would be acceptable to you because they would eliminate that issue of.
Yeah, I hope so.
Encouragement on your property. Um, okay, well, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else, uh, in person have comments for us tonight? Yeah.
Um, in the hoteling forty five Klein Road. Um, my concern, Castle, was something that you said earlier, is that you did not have a buyer for that large parcel. Um, I'm under the impression that there was a potential buyer for that parcel and you chose not to. Uh, as a private citizen, I also have concerns when I hear probably, there's not going to be a restrict. You're not going to really interfere with that wooded area. Probably and think doesn't sit well with me. When we're looking at a major subdivision and a beautiful piece of land that you're wanting to break. So that you can sell the land and walk away, um, that's a concern because that's going to end up being our problem, no matter who the tenants are. You'll sell, you'll leave with your money, and then we're left with dealing with the issues at hand. So my concern is that there's not definitive answers. Uh, Mr. Phelps really summarized that well as equally. But we need to know more information about who these potential end users would be and how it's going to impact our community. So, that's it.
Okay, uh. Any other public comments? Alright, um, online, any public comments online? Joanne, go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm concerned because in looking at, um, the website for Indus. Um, I won't go over the whole thing, but they are a real estate company focused on select high growth. Supply constrained markets that can satisfy the demand of ever changing supply change requirements. They talk about the lot sizes or the building sizes averaging anywhere between seventy five thousand and four hundred thousand square feet. They also talk about the fact that they can put three tenants on one piece of property. They, um, they also, I believe, are the ones that are responsible for the Amazon Distribution Center in Windsor, Connecticut. Which is a huge concern of mine. Some of the developments that they state in their website are Landstar Logistics Center, Carolina Trade Port one and two. New England Trade Port and Lehigh Valley Trade Port, Trade Port one and two, among other things. These are massive developments and this is going to destroy the town. Just my two cents.
Alright, would you kindly state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne LeBlanc, thirty eight Reservoir Road.
Okay, thank you. Um. Any, uh, other public comments online? Okay, seeing none, um, last chance, anybody? Okay. Okay. Um. Any other board comments before we. Wrap this up for tonight? Okay. Uh, applicant have anything else for us before we wrap it up tonight?
Um, I, I, I just would request respectfully that, you know, there's been a lot of comment with regard to how tractor supply was handled. And what I garnered from the discussion was that that was at the special permit process, that's when it was requested. That they put that deposit of the thirty-five thousand dollars in escrow. The property was originally owned by one of the adjacent property owners and who. Did subdivide it for the use for tractor supplies, my understanding, that wasn't a freestanding lot. It was subdivided out and then. It was, then it was brought to special permit.
Slightly, I mean, it's, well. Was, it was a hybrid. Right of a special permit and yours, in that they had, they applied for yours basically, but knew one of the tenants. Um, if you know what I mean. Um, and so there was one unknown and one tenant and. That's how they came. Um, so it was, I guess, a hybrid of, of what is being proposed here. Um. So, I mean, I. Um, yeah, I mean, we'll certainly keep, I mean, it's not, it's not apples to apples necessarily, so it's certainly something to keep in mind.
Never is.
It never is. Um, all right. Um, so my suggestion would be to continue this on, I mean, I know I need to wrap my head around some things. Um, so, um, March seventh, okay with. The applicant as far as availability?
It should be.
Okay.
I just want to kind of go over a couple of things, so just, so traffic, obviously, from what, you know, traffic. And the discussion regarding the intersection, so that was a bit, a tree concern, uh, maintaining some existing trees. Just so, so we're going to try to work on some things in the meantime to kind of come to a resolution here, uh, further discussion with the water. Uh, but those are really the, the large sort of.
The water supply off of College Highway instead of Tannery Road.
Or looping, looping in it, because you, you.
Possibly, because the volume available apparently is, is better off of College Highway.
Look at me, yeah.
And even if it wouldn't be somebody you would categorize as a high water user. It's going to affect our residential community with this right there and adjacent to it.
And it's also not necessarily a high water user. If you have a building large enough, they're going to need a sprinkler system realistically, and so.
Yeah, and I think that's why the easement, I'm sorry. Um, but I think that that's why they were proposing the easement for the water to begin with is because. Once people are identified and, and the size of the building is identified, we're already anticipating that there will need to be a sprinkler system for the majority of the users. So that's why it was identified and it's easing up the loop it and, and bring the, the larger volume. An easement and bring the larger volume all the way to Tannery. And then have it reduced at Tannery, at the intersection of Tannery, so that all of the users. Would be able to take advantage of the higher volume line.
And I mean, again, it's, it's the exact same issue, right, which is what gets dealt with now and what gets dealt with later and how do we plan that? And that's, that's what we got to wrap our heads in for the next meetings.
Well, are we going to be able to move anything forward on the traffic analysis or we wait till next meeting to decide that?
I think it's got to be dealt with at the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah, I think, I, I think.
Because I would like to see something going on in the interim. Well, there are some firms identified. That can do that kind of thing. Do you use third party? I'm sure you do out of Levek Associates.
I mean, to answer that question, we do. From coming from that third party standpoint, it's how do you assign? Traffic to, to a use that.
Well, I, I think you take the worst case scenario as one extreme.
What's the worst case scenario?
Worst case scenario. And then. Where you scale, scale down from there. So, I mean, you got, have to have some kind of sideboard. And we may, you know, how we deal with the process of. The incremental special permit submissions. You know, who? Who ends up? Having to pay the full amount of what it would. It'd be expected to contribute to that intersection. Is it the first lot that gets developed or the third lot that gets developed? I mean. We've got to, like Mr. Doherty said, we've got to. Think about it.
So I, I, I just have a question and, and I don't know if anybody on the board has an answer, I would. But my question is, is a dialogue been initiated with Mass DOT as to whether or not this is an intersection that they feel needs a signal?
Yes.
And have they indicated that they are. Interested in having a signal? I assume yes, right, but they don't. If they haven't put you on the timeline as far as when they're going to do that.
They're looking at potential other answers, I think.
Yeah, there's, we do need to talk to Mass DOT because. There's a project in design to reconstruct College Highway from Tannery Road. North to the Westfield line. That's another section, College Highway was divided into three sections through the center of town. Uh, and the north. I don't know Randy Brown, who's DPW Director, he probably knows. The timeframe for that reconstruction, but. Hopefully DOT. Could take some of these things into consideration if they're going to reconstruct it. Build it wide enough there at that intersection so you could put in a left turn lane. You know, at the various. Uh, locations.
I was just wondering whether, like, how far down the road Mass DOT is, because it sounded like. You were under the impression, um, Ms. Gordon, um, that. That it was a failing intersection and that's usually a term of art that's used by. Traffic control people.
Been evaluated.
Yeah. Been evaluated. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, you know, I just.
It's not just my own personal experience, but trying to pull out the tractor supply, it is. Identify this.
So we maybe we should ask Randy to kind of give us a little more information on that. Whole activity for what is planned for that area.
Yeah, I mean, that's worth getting, um, but I think we defer until the next meeting for anything. I mean, I think it ultimately has to be voted on by the board as far as what they're going to require, so, um, I think letting people get their heads around something. Talking about it the next meeting, it's a better, a better, um. Plan. Um. All right, what do we, what did you, you have times or you not have time?
We have one at seven oh six.
Thank you.
Which, they take thirty seconds.
Um, yeah, so just put it at seven twenty again. Uh, do I hear a motion?
So, Marcus Phelps.
Do I hear a second?
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Josephine, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Okay, um. Okay, so seven twenty on, uh, March seventh. Um. You may very well get designated, Jessica, so. I assume you're going to be present.
All intensive.
Uh, I just wanted to invite you, if anybody has any questions between now and then, if they want to reach out, both of them, associates, they're probably the, the first. And then they can reach out to me and I'm more than happy to try to assist as much as I can as well.
Can John have your contact information?
And make sure that he, he does if he doesn't.
Uh, you will establish that line of communication.
I appreciate it, thank you, John. Have a great day.
Thank you. Have a good night, fully.
Thank you. Okay.
Right on schedule.
That was too long.
Seven thirty.
Getting into the good stuff now.
Propose short-term rental bylaw, all appearing.
Have a known a mic?
All right. Notice of public hearing Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty PM. Be a zoom in in the land use hearing room, four fifty-four College Highway, notices hereby given in accordance with the provision of Master and Law Chapter forty-eight, section five, that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, February first, twenty twenty-three. At seven thirty PM, be a zoom in land use hearing in the Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway. To consider amending the code of the town of Southwood. To include a new short-term rentals by law provided for the administration and enforcement of short-term rental properties. Zoom information is provided, details regarding the public bylaw may be reviewed by contacting the town planner, John Trotter, at his phone or email, any person considered or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear. At the time and place designated by the majority chairperson, Southwood Planning Board. Okay. Um. Good folks at the certain term. Rental Subcommittee. Have provided us with a draft bylaw. Um, everybody has a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, um, John, when you get a chance, can you just throw it up online? Thank you. Everybody's had a chance to review it on the board? I'm going to take that as a resounding yes. And. Um. Do we have? Thoughts or comments or questions? Or. Facial gestures or anything else about?
Facial gestures?
About anything, do we, we hear, do we hear anything?
Anything stick out on this for you, Dick?
I think the concern is the enforcement of it. Um. I know that's our responsibility, well, it's. Responsibility of somebody else in town, but. At the meetings, the building director said he did not have time to take care of this. So I don't know where that goes. And again, um. You know, down here in Florida right now, if they have short-term rentals, violations are five hundred dollars per violation. And I don't know what sort of parameters we set for that. I don't know how we set parameters for the rates for inspections. Who covers the cost of those? A lot of questions that really aren't answered, that's sort of why I kicked it back to the board, we figured you guys could have, have all the answers for us.
Awesome.
And it goes out for him.
Um.
Stay online, Dick, don't leave.
It ran.
Well, I mean, the reality is, we don't enforce anything. Um, that is the voting process, so. Um, and if they don't have time, then. We need to figure out whether that is a. Systems issue, a priority issue, or a. Building inspector issue, I suppose, but, um, we figure that out, so. Um, and if we can make a change, we will make a change, but it doesn't mean I don't think necessarily that the bylaw is not appropriate to have on the books. Um. Um. All right, so where was the?
I, uh, before we get into specifics.
Yes, Marcus.
I, I came across, uh. Something that's going on in South Hadley. That's parallel to what we're doing here.
Okay.
And. I don't know if John. Provided, I guess you didn't provide a copy of their draft. Uh, but.
I linked some stuff.
All right, good. So there was an ability to look at the South Hadley. Material and. They, they took a different approach. A little bit. A quarter of the bylaw is zoning and three quarters of the bylaw is general bylaw. Related to the administration of the process. The enforcement. The licensing, the fees and all that, they consider that as an administrative. Process. The way our bylaw is, it's, it's all together. In one. So, I mean, that's the way Southwood wants to approach it, so I guess that's the way we would do it. Uh. They have some excellent. Definitions, uh, they have a section on enforcement. Which. Is a little more detailed than what is proposed. In the bylaw that we have, the draft. So I would say. As we go through this, I'd like to bring in some of the things from South Hadley. Uh. Initially, from the broader scope. They divide short-term rentals. Into whether the property is owner occupied. Or non-owner occupied. And they prescribe a different process for licensing. If it's owner occupied. They only require a site plan review. So, you know, it's a one night, one shot, one agenda item. Uh, if the owner is going to be there. If it's non-owner occupied, they require a special permit be issued. So that's a lot more detailed process. Obviously. Takes longer. The fact is. There's no manager, no owner on site, so. Things can happen and. Uh, however, you want to deal with that, I guess, you know, it gets dealt with. But I would like to see in a general way. We follow kind of a similar framework. Uh, anyway, that's kind of the opening. Oh, the only other item is too, we need to clearly say. I think that bed and breakfasts, Airbnb, whatever you call it, is included. As a short-term rental.
Why wouldn't it be?
No. Uh, I don't know, it's not in here in currently. I, you know, it's not spelled that.
Well, I mean, I just, I don't. Why, um.
Well, I think it should be, and maybe we're assuming it is, I don't know.
Bed and breakfast in particular, or Airbnb as a. And company?
No, no, we wouldn't name the company, we'd just name the, uh, the concept.
I mean, I think we, I think it's not included in short-term rental.
I don't know if you have, we've got an opinion about. Short-term rental regulations and. Uh, from Bacon and Wilson back in two thousand nineteen and. It lists bed and breakfast establishment, bed and breakfast home. As separate definitions from short-term rental. So I don't know if that's. We want to take a look at that, at that to see. Why or why not we might want to include it? Or not include it.
So include or not included in our definitions?
Right.
So we can follow it out in the bylaw?
Because your questioning is, is, does our bylaw cover that? And if our bylaw is just entitled short-term rentals, then. I would say the state would say it does not apply to bed and breakfasts because they specifically identify those establishments as different definitions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess my, if you had a, if you, and I don't know enough about bed and breakfasts, I gotta look into that, I remember that letter and I gotta take a look at it again.
I mean, it even, it breaks it down as a bed and breakfast establishment is a private owner occupied house where four or more rooms are rented versus. A bed and breakfast home, which is a private owner occupied house where not more than three rooms.
Are they, are they licensed under the state? You know, they're saying, I think, that's referred to a section of the Master and Laws for bed and breakfasts, but that's. Me, that may be a little bit of the. Defining factors, because like hotels and motel, you know, that are all licensed and they. Uh, you get into a little bit of a. I don't know, it's a gray area, you're talking about, I mean, what's the, what's the difference between a bed and breakfast and a. And other than breakfast, right?
I would just say that regardless of the question of where they. If we intend for this bylaw to cover them, we need to, I would think, need to outline that.
Yeah, yeah.
To find that such.
Um, okay. All right, um, anything else from the board?
I noted that we refer to family apartments and accessory affordable type apartments as ineligible units. But unless I missed it, I couldn't find a definition of those in one eighty-five or two.
Like a, uh, a large apartment?
I'm assuming that's kind of what it is, but we don't, we capitalize it as it's the thing, but don't actually define it.
What section is that in?
That'll be section, uh. And, you know, the wood minutes. On their fourth page, top of the fourth.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I guess I would ask back to Dick, why? Those were left. Off of that.
Yes.
Why not? Like, that would. That would seem to be the type of place that you might want to. That would seem to be the type of place that you might want to encourage to do it because that would imply that the owner is on site in the main housing. Area. Yeah, I question whether if. Allow for them to be built, but there may be a party summon existence that are.
Yeah, we real, really. We can't include that because there are none right now.
What?
B, there are not, none of those types allowed in Southwood. A family apartment or an accessory affordable apartment.
Well, that's not. Necessarily sure. You can have a mother-in-law suite.
You can have it, but not an apartment.
Well, what's, what's the definition of a family apartment?
In other words, it has a kitchen.
Yeah, well, those are in existence.
But what?
Legally. They may exist, but they're not legal.
I was gonna say, you can have more than one kitchen in your house.
But it cannot be associated within a park.
But again, if you, yeah, I mean, I, I guess. It's a fine line as.
Has an access in the hallway and then the upstairs go upstairs, so there is an exterior, but it's not necessarily, it's not an apartment, but. It'd be at some point. And then again, why wouldn't that be the exact situation where if we say we're gonna allow? Short term rentals in some case within the town, that that would be the exact place that I would say. I would rather it be there than the home that's not owner occupied, you know, down by the lake that's gonna turn into a party house.
But the issue is, it, the issue is a definition.
My, my first point was, they're not defined, I think beyond that, that is, okay. And Jessica, you don't wanna penalize them for charging their family member to stay in the, uh. Go ahead, Dick.
You know, we're doing all this. We don't even know if the town's gonna approve. Short term rentals, are we starting putting a carton for a horse? We're trying, are we gonna get this done so we can bring it to the board to see if the town will even approve them? Cause, cause we're people in town who are not in favor of these.
Yeah, but if you don't have a bylaw in place to vote on, you gotta have something to vote on, you gotta have a bylaw, you bring it to town meeting and it's. Voted two thirds vote or not three thirds vote?
Yeah, lucky, as long as I, as long as we know it's where we're going here, because. We're gonna do the bylaw first and then present it to the town and hope they like it, is that, is that correct?
Not, I don't think of any other way that we could do it.
That's the process.
I mean, unless you divide, again, unless you divided it up, I mean, there isn't, right? This bylaw covers the, both the right and the process. So unless you divided it up to separate out the right and have that. As a very simple bylaw and voted on that there is a right to have, but then you wouldn't, why would you do it without the?
Answers a lot of the questions that would be asked of, why am I voting yes or no on this?
And we, our approach is to combine it all together, not to separate it.
Well, no, but.
We put administration in, in, in our bylaws.
But it's, it's, it's. I mean, one of the things we gotta talk about is. It's coming to the planning board, the planning board is recommending it. But. It has administration by different folks, I mean, I don't think it's the, it's not. Who's, who's doing the? You know, the fees and all that, I mean, that's not the, the board and that's not even necessarily the building inspector, I don't think that, that is gonna be. Taking care of that, right? I mean, is that, is it necessarily gonna be the building inspector? And that would be the issue, right? I, whether he has time or not for inspections is one thing, whether he has time to deal with. Applications and fees and all that kind of stuff.
Somebody has an answer over there. Yeah, that, that's how Hadley broke it up. They, they put the administrative part in, in a general bylaw.
I don't think it has to be, this is gonna be a general bylaw, but it's not, this isn't in one eighty-five.
I thought it was in one eighty-five.
I don't know if it necessarily is. I mean, it wasn't even, it. I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
So we have to pull this apart and say, what part is the zoning? Part, and what part is the administrative part?
I mean, I guess I don't know the answer to. Whether we can. I would think we can just recommend it to. Town meeting or it goes to the town, uh, select board and. As a recommendation. Gets put on the warrant article, um, as a recommendation. But there may be other departments who are involved in this, I mean, I think, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Sure you do. Our zoning enforcement officer slash building inspector.
But we're not, I, I can't. So now. That, that to me seems like it may be a bit of an onerous thing, if you're putting on a building inspector, both the. The, the application and processing and. Whether there's yearly fees or whether, I mean, if all that is being put on the building inspector's office, that, that's not the. I mean, in a town where you have. Bunch of rentals by the lake every year, that's. Won't be a decent job to add on to that, I think.
Well, the other thing. The other thing Hadley pulls is, or has, they limit how many. They maximize it at twenty-five.
And of that, it was only like. Five that could be non-owner occupied, like it was. So. They limited the impact of allowing them and the, the enforcement of them by. Putting a cap. On what they feel the town can handle at that time, so that might be. Something to potentially look at, but I don't think we should. Decide whether or not our town and the people within it should be allowed to do something, whether or not. It affects somebody else's job and they need to speak with their boss about having more time or assistance to complete their job duties, that's, I don't get that.
I'm not saying that it shouldn't be there, I'm just, well, I think that that should be a consideration as to where you put that obligation.
But is that for us to decide or for the town administrator to decide what?
I don't know the answer to that.
Like he, I'm the building inspector, I identify that this is a violation and then it goes to the town clerk who charges the money, I don't know what that is.
No, but it's a bylaw, so it has to at some point say in there who's responsible for it, so we have to assign. Responsibility for that administrative process, I mean, that has to be, I think.
Go, you got, you got something?
Mr. Member of the audience.
He's an audience member.
So first of all. Appreciate the fact that a good portion of your short term rental subcommittee showed up for the public hearing, right? That's you, I mean, it's really great, much appreciated for everybody. Um, and I, you know, I know Dick, Dick's on the planning board. And that's you, Danny, or Randy or anyone else is online, but that's fantastic. Secondly, as far as. How it's documented, whether town council will recommend that a portion of the bylaw fall under zoning and fall, part of fall under other code sections. We, we, we always let them put that, the bylaws up for. That being said. I always don't complain. The building inspector and the zoning enforcement officer in a town of Southwood today, that is the same person. That may not be the case forever, okay? So if he, if it is charged under the zoning enforcement officer, then he is going to be enforcing. One eighty-five, so if this is in one eighty-five, that's where his enforcement power is derived. The rest of the process as described in the bylaw. The, the fire department was represented on, on the subcommittee, they had input into it, they also have an inspectional services. Person that is gonna be, you know, kind of a group that is integral to the process of getting these. Properties inspected in the first place. Um, so, and the police were on it, I believe he was online and he was here in person, but. Ran a little long, but he might still be online, they were represented on the short term, uh, subcommittee as well, so.
But if it's not in the bylaw, they have no authority to do anything. Right? If they're not listed in the bylaw as someone who has some standing to. To enforce or inspect or to. Whatever, I'm not sure they have the right to do anything.
But the zo, the zoning enforcement officer does, and that's why this is probably put in zoning. But that was the talk from the court, I'm, I'm not speaking for the whole committee, but I, my take on it was that. That's how it ended up as a zoning bylaw because the zoning enforcement officer, at the end of the day, if the police are called out. They will then notify the zoning enforcement officer the next day or whatever to. To take further action or issue tickets or fines or whatever they're going to be against the owner.
No, I'm just thinking there is going to be, and maybe it gets limited by the way we, what we allow, but there's going to be. Some degree of. Administrative process that goes along with this, whether it's, you know, processing applications, taking in fees. Following up on a yearly basis for any kind of yearly. You know, ongoing things, I, I don't, that seems odd to have. A zoning enforcement or a building inspector doing. Uh, to some degree, it seems almost equivalent to, uh. You know. Dog license or whatever else that gets handled by a.
It, it can be delegated, it may end up being delegated to the town clerk, right? But, and, and it can be described in zoning. Uh, as to how the process works, or, or town council can decide that you're right, maybe that should be a separate. Piece of the bylaw, I mean, you guys are at the early part of this discussion as to how. And so, you know, whether you should proceed and take the recommendation of a committee that met for a year and gave you a bylaw and for, for discussion and consideration. That's, that's where you're at, and, and just to add a little bit of color since I have forty-one seconds, Mr. Speed has questioned. The reason with the prohibition on, on accessory apartments and, uh, especially called out low income. Low income is, it does have a designation under the law, and the thought was that if someone is. Supposed to be occupying a, an income determined rental property, thus they get a lower rent. Rate than market, then they shouldn't be in a position, they should be living there and not renting it out, short term or anyway, right? So that was the basis for that, and the accessory piece, Marcus has a good point. Master plan is calling that, you know, it has shown some, some positive interest around reigniting that. Discussion again, and if, you know, an accessory apartment or an in-law apartment as they're more commonly called, would meant exactly that, to bring in. Elderly parents or grandparents to, and a vote not to be an apartment or a short term rental. So that was the other reason in the basis for the exclusion in the zoning bylaw.
And they're termed accessory dwelling units now.
But back when I was on the planning board, they were called in-law apartments.
We need them.
No argument here, we, we struggled for two years to try to define what an in-law or a family member was, right? But the master plan part of that is, you know, it's, it's not done yet, but there has been talk about the need. Continued need for that, and then you guys will have the discussion of how you avoid having them turn into just rental apartments and the traffic and the other. You know, negative effects that can come with that, that'll be your job to handle in the bylaw.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
So I didn't know these other people in the back were part of the subcommittee.
Is that, is that include, like in the dead of summer when. By Congress, there's still only five that exist? Is that, is that just Airbnb or does that include rentals in general?
So, and that's a, a quick point out that. Commercials have been, you know, Super Bowl last week and everything floating around my head, it's been. Verbo and Airbnb have been very, um. Specific about stating how you're never gonna get a verbo where you have to worry about walking into the house and the weird owner. Is staring at you from the other room, so. It's very, I think it's important just to keep in mind that. There's a big difference between a vacation rental and an Airbnb versus. You know, that one night thing, like, that's why I think if South Hadley's, um. Split in identification of owner occupied versus non-owner occupied can. Help alleviate some of the concerns before the board, and I think the public in. Well, what are we allowing, and I think we're gonna be allowing party houses to develop and. That can be part of our control of limiting that.
So are you planning on? Offering a markup version that includes the South Hadley, yeah, I'm looking at you.
Wasn't so sick that day.
Are you, uh, planning on offering your suggestion as to how the South Hadley version?
I would, I, I would put it in at red. I'll work with John, because he's better at word sniffing than I am, no. Uh, not, not, not word sniffing, you know. Taking this and putting it in there. Because Hadley has. South Hadley has some good stuff. John even dedicated, was it two hours of one evening to listen in on their hearing. They had a public hearing on their bylaw. Yeah, did you hear anything at that hearing?
Sure, sure.
Two bloody hours of, uh. South Hadley people. Talking about short term rentals.
It was something, they, they, they were. For context. Uh, South Hadley had, I think, twelve, what they said. Uh, but they had no complaints, this was, uh, through zoning enforcement, they identified the same circumstance that Southern passed. Not on their bylaws, it's a prohibited, prohibited. Um, bylaw therefore. Uh, it's, it's not allowed, uh, roughly twice the population of Southwood. Obviously, they've had the opportunity to chew on this, uh, in a different fashion.
So twice our population and they had twelve.
Yes.
I mean, I think you have to at least recognize that Congress may be a little bit more.
Draw. Inter, so they meant, go ahead.
But not if you count in that full year college and the number of families that visit, constantly visits South Hadley and it not being a. A town that has a hotel or motel.
It's true. South Hadley, I think, has a really broad. Broad range of uses, that's. Across that town, and suffice it to say, the, the discussion really revolved around. If you will, those tenants, those short term tenants, um. In my mind, I'm thinking water, Connecticut River, but they don't have that same density that we do have here around lakes. Um, just a couple of, uh, I suppose, fun thoughts that came out of that discussion. That I'm sure Marcus will be thinking about, uh, one note that I saw that. Uh, they had there was that if the house was up for sale, um, it was not eligible for use as a short term rental. Uh, one of the public comments that came in, uh, was. And I think it's also affected ours as well, but making sure that guests are limited, not just tenants. Immediate suspension due to health. Building or fire code reasons, that may be. A duplicate effort, really depending on if it was the severity of this type of thing. But, um, there was, there were some notions that jumped out from the discussions and I, how do we best manage?
Alright, so why don't you? Redline the draft, we'll take up both this one and that one at the next meeting and. Hopefully. Get to a decent place.
Well, we're still doing.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I know. Um, alright, so we.
And the, we want to include bed and breakfast. At, under short term rental. I mean, that's the direction. We wanna have it all.
I just wanna see whether there's a regulation for them, uh, to begin with, I mean, I guess that's first thing.
Yeah, if the state considers them more under a hotel and motel.
And I got that letter again, Bacon Wilson. Alright, any town officials have comments?
Actually, guys. Yep, um. Under section eight occupancy requirements. Two per bedroom plus two. Total. So three bedroom place has six plus two is eight total. Is that consistent with? Capacity for like septic system design? Anybody know? It is, okay, that's, that's cool. If that's, if that's true, the other thing that I'm thinking is, should we include in section seven? That there be a septic system inspection prior to starting using as a bed and breakfast to make sure that that's all working right, because. Especially if you're dealing with lakes and whatever. You know, septic system's not working quite well, because thirty years ago, nobody ever really looked at it. All of a sudden now you start renting out your house at maximum capacity every weekend for whatever.
Mostly sewer down.
Mostly sewer down there now? Okay, well, I'm just saying in general. Well, I'm just saying in general. Is that something that we want to include?
Any anything else for the board?
There was one we had under I had a question under uh on page four item ten ineligible units, but we went through that. Uh, and I had made a note. What's the situation in a subdivision where there's homeowner association rules? They would trump? Did we, did we come to that at all? We don't have to address it in the bylaw?
Not our issue.
No, thanks.
Private issue.
So so we don't address that at all? That makes it easier.
Thank goodness.
You good?
Yeah.
Alright, anything else? Public officials?
Doug Moglen, vice chair, for a select man. The only thing when you're reviewing all this stuff, read the state law on short-term rentals. It will answer some of the questions that are going to come up. Like, why is bed and breakfast not in there? Because it's called out in that law as exempted from the short-term rental piece that they're covering. And this are the short-term rental proposed bylaw in front of you is applying to the state law, best we think. So that's why motels and in places that may rent a place and bed and breakfast are not in it.
Yeah, alright, even though it's you know if it's licensed or not, bed and breakfast?
They are. I think, but they're licensed separately.
Well, that's what I I I assume that's what they.
Yeah, we purposely didn't include them here to catch them in this thing. This is more for, you know, private homes or private residences renting out a you know, not something that's hanging a shingle as the bed and breakfast. And it it it's subtle, right? Because hard to tell the difference.
No, but I assume that what they, if you're licensed and you're sort of in business of doing this, whether it's a bed and breakfast or a, you know, Sheridan. You are still in the business of doing this and they're okay within your license and you control that way versus everything else.
Right. And this avoids having somebody having to decide or have someone else decide that they need to bolt or, you know, whatever.
You have too many cooks in the kitchen.
So the state is licensing bed and breakfasts.
I would just read the, I I don't wanna speak out as an expert on it, but we did review it in the early part of our thing. And that's how we came up with the use case and certain situations and what was in, what was that like? The Sheridan no way gets caught up in in a short-term rental bylaw.
Alright, um, any other public officials? Uh, public comments?
I just wonder if you would, I I would be in favor of this bylaw to allow the people who are doing it to continue to do it, to regulate those who are doing it that you don't know. And also, you know, promote a little bit of the recreation of our community. Um, I'm just curious if this would be restricted to certain zones or would it be anywhere in town? Would it just be residential zones? What your thoughts are on that?
Right now, it's applicable townwide. It is limited only to, it applies to, I mean, it's a, it's a bylaw that applies townwide. It defines in this, that short-term rentals shall only be allowed in one or two family or multifamily dwelling units. So it is, it is inherently limited to.
Self-regulate. And then are bed and breakfast even allowed in one eighty-five thirty-seven dot one B prohibited home occupation? Bed and breakfast is a prohibited. So are they allowed or not?
Well, it depends on where they are, I think, right? I mean.
She's referring to a one eighty-five.
Right, but a home occupation. It has to be a home. I mean, I don't know, I don't know where bed and breakfast falls as far as I mean, a real like a like a
Somebody could be an operator of a bed and breakfast and you can have a caretaker on site, but that isn't necessarily owner occupied. This is my house and I'm renting out a room versus I own a bed and breakfast and the manager is there and she will cook you eggs in the morning and steak at night.
How would my home into a bed and breakfast?
I think, yeah, there's no. But.
Not that I wanna clean for anybody else.
What's the number again?
I mean, I don't know the answer to it off the top of my head as to whether you can or not. It strikes me that it doesn't necessarily have to be home occupation is is talking about sort of in the residential zone and, you know, single-family homes or two-family homes or whatever is and and that doesn't have to be a bed and breakfast could be that, I suppose. And I don't know if that is allowed or not, but there are bed and breakfasts, like you said, which are more professionally run businesses. Uh, you know, you go to some seaside town or you go to, you know, wherever it is.
Lakeside.
Or lakeside town. Um, but you know, the sort of destination-type bed and breakfasts are more professionally run than.
Yeah, I'm thinking in the future would we want to allow a bed and breakfast on the lakes? We used to have it.
Yeah, it differs. And again, I think maybe we can spend some time looking at the bed and breakfast stuff in the state law to just better understand what the scope is. I don't know. Correct. And that may be an issue for a difference. I mean, if we're not able to regulate it, if it's dealt with by the state, then it's dealt with by the state and it's not our issue.
It was discussed in the planning board. I I don't remember whether it is or isn't allowed. I know it's not a customary home occupation. You'd have to go into zoning and determine where it would be allowed.
Right.
By zone.
Right.
I remember the customary home occupation, but I don't, and we said it's not that. And then, but whether it would be allowed in a B zone, like say the house is right out front up here, right? Old homes that are would that be a bed and breakfast? I you guys, that would be, you guys would have to have that discussion at another time when, you know, we read up on it, but I I don't know that you could take your house, my house, and make it a bed and breakfast in a residential zone. I think it would be a business in a residential zone. You couldn't do it. So if you wanted to have it, that's a separate discussion that the planning board would have to have on a separate bylaw, separate from short-term rentals, because it's not by the by the state law, it ain't that.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
The the only other thing I want, this this South Hadley piece did talk about site plan review and special permitting. Uh, having learned the lesson of, and this did come up during the the short-term rental sub. Having learned the lesson of previous under customary home occupation and making everyone get dragged in front of the planning board for a special permit for a customary home occupation as we had for five or ten years. Uh, the town saw to it and the planning board saw to it to amend the bylaw to allow it by right, essentially, as long as you don't impact you know, the exterior of your home, so you can't tell what's going on. Thank God we had a pandemic. Can you imagine how many people would have been in front of this bloody board on Zoom? But uh
Shooting for longer meetings.
We'd still be here for the first meeting. I don't believe that the the short-term rental bylaw in front of you, that it calls for any planning board review. Um, if they meet the qualifications of what the bylaw calls for, there's inspectional services and zoning enforcement piece, but not anything that comes in front of a elected volunteer uncompensated board that meets on a Tuesday night from seven to midnight.
Boy, this this uh two shifts. Close the book on that. But you know, Michelle, like before we settled down and got older, we used to go to bed and breakfast all the time. And all the different towns and places we've gone to, which were quite a few. Um, they range anywhere from like Doug was saying, the nice houses that you have in the center of the town to farmhouses out on the sides of the town in the middle of nowhere, as long as the home was big enough to handle it. It's determined where they had it, but some of the nicest ones we stayed in were just a old couple and had three empty rooms and a a big piece of property and an old farmhouse and
Sutton's root and shoot and shoot and bed and be in the week. I want a percentage in ten years when that becomes the finest A B and B in town. Just remember who gave you that high chip first.
Gotta get licensed by the state. With breakfast.
Uh, any other public comments? Alright, I don't see anything.
Oh, Randy Brown is still online.
I'm gonna say, I I need pictures or else it didn't happen. Uh, alright, do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to uh um why don't we change it to seven forty and be slightly more realistic?
Are we gonna be ready at the next one?
You gotta convert your daughter to get a colored printer so we can see all the red light.
Timeline for this, John, to get it on the town meeting warrant.
I only put this way, I I I've I've credit enough to
We gotta close the hearing next next meeting, right?
Um, no, we've we've got more room than that, but I haven't gotten so nervous, I need to
Thought they were due by the end of March.
Oh, draft articles.
These are bylaws. You could close it and vote on it right there. It's not like you have to have a written decision that you have to then prepare, so. You have a little bit.
Why don't you know?
Yeah, you just really can't take two meetings off.
So next meeting, three, seven.
Wait till you see how many I may have to take off, but um, alright, um.
So move. He did.
Good for a second. Dip, you're good? Second? Call, call, vote, like already.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Alright. Notice format.
Yeah.
Seven forty P M.
Seven forty.
Zoning bylaw amendments, public hearing for chapter one eighty-five, sections fourteen, twenty-one, thirty, and thirty point one. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
We'll let you know about that Sutton Root and Shoot and Say.
Kind of the summer for the air question, pretty, man, cold breakfast. There he's grown outside, right?
And now, are you having a syrup there?
Everything he makes of that stuff goes to the food pantry.
I know.
That was great. It tastes good, ain't it, doesn't it?
Notice a public hearing Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, seven forty P M via Zoom in the Land Use Hearing Room, four fifty-four College Highway. Notices hereby given in accordance with the provision of master and laws, chapter forty-eight, section five, the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at seven forty three M P M. Zoom in the in the Land Use Hearing Room, Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway, Suffolk, Mass. To consider reminding the codes of the town of Suffolk, chapter one eighty-five, its owning as follows. Section fourteen residence owner twenty-eight and section thirty off-street parking and loading to allow the use of previous paving materials and off-street parking areas and drive-ways. Section twenty-one estate lots to allow for flexibility in driveway width for state lots. And thirty point one residential common driveways to allow the use of previous paving materials and advice language and conventions pertaining to the required driveway separation from adjacent property and easement area widths. Zoom information provided. Details regarding the proposed amendments may be reviewed by contacting the town planner, John Goddard, at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated, Michael Burry, Jefferson, Suffolk. Your your choice.
Why don't we start with one eighty-five fourteen? That's the R twenty-eight zone. Uh, with I think one exception, these are all generally speaking, technical adjustments, open to suggestions for language. Oh, Randy, uh
He's awake. That's why Randy stayed around. I think he's in his bedroom, though. I think he's Did somebody call him? He's in his bedroom. Oh, he's muted, so. We can say anything we want over there.
I'm in my living room, ungunned.
I think it's not happening.
Uh, that that was a little better. Audio was not working for quite a while. I missed, I missed all of what you said. Just a tail end there.
Um, alright, John read it. It sounded good.
Yeah, I the I think there was a typo on this section. I think you deleted one word. Uh, the word B, did you miss? Did you catch that? The parking area shall be located on the site.
We're still having trouble hearing you on Zoom.
Still having trouble? Wow.
Yep.
I think the meter ran out.
That's, that's much better.
We gotta put another quarter in the hour, Randy.
Alright, so this one looks good. We'll move on to section thirty twenty-eight.
So I'm sorry, we're looking at now twenty-five thirty for off-street parking and loading. Very similar. Very similar adjustments, very similar language to make sure that Randy, or or excuse me, he would be director uh, has the opportunity to review any proposed details for perennial paving and underlying surfaces.
So it's inserted twice. So it's inserted twice.
Keep going. There you go. All right, everybody okay with that? Oh, yeah. So.
Yeah, you're not showing these on Zoom, but I I am following along with my paper. No worries.
Okay, this is where we have a little bit of uh greater spring things, yes. Uh, so the change that's accommodate permeable paving is language added under compacted surface. We say alternatively, oops, excuse me, Randy, and everybody on Zoom.
You still able to hear us, Randy?
Yes.
So that, okay, all right. Changing the easement area to from thirty to thirty-five.
We're under, oh, yeah.
And um. Changing the. The um shared portion of the common driveway to. Uh, be potentially as narrow as twelve feet with justification. Acceptance by various departments. Everybody, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Still good with the audio, Randy?
Yeah. Much better.
All right, uh, and then is this the last one, twenty-one?
One eighty-five twenty-one, yeah.
All right. Estate lots. Uh, again, it's the same change narrowing the width um. Of the access driveway to be potentially twelve feet from fifteen if justified and approved by. Various departments, safety, fire and BPW. All right.
And we don't worry about easement width on this one. Because it's on the lot itself.
Any uh questions, comments from the board? Any questions, comments from the public officials? Here and on Zoom.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, any questions or comments by any of the non-public officials on Zoom? Hey. Uh, do I hear a motion to close this? I'm sorry. Uh, any public comments? From the two public members, um, all right. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second? Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Okay. Do we wanna just vote on that and get that out the door? Do I hear a motion? Uh, one, um. Yeah, I would do each one separately.
Yeah.
Uh, do I hear a motion on section fourteen, which is the R twenty-eight?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
In a second.
Little roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
All right, and to be clear, that's a motion to approve uh that's proposed changes. Do I hear a motion to approve the proposed changes to section twenty-one estate lots?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed changes to section thirty off-street parking and loading?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Do I hear a motion to approve the proposed changes to section thirty point one?
Marcus Phelps.
The roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
David Sutton, I.
All right. And actually, it's probably approved for recommendation, right?
Right, recommend.
Recommend whatever you want to call it. All right, so that's. Done.
We do.
One done.
We just need to go to.
They gotta go to the select boards. Do we need a motion to? I don't think we need a motion to send it to you. I think it just gets sent to you by by.
Be added to the annual town.
Yeah.
That's why you have your hearing. Right?
Yeah, I don't think it needs that. Yeah, it doesn't need it. We're good, um, so, um. Routine business. This is gonna be very routine at nine forty-three, um. Eso Square. Update.
Uh, all right, so past two meetings I kept threatening to just take it off the agenda. I couldn't, I didn't make it, all right? So last week, spoke with. Rob was acting Randy uh on a phone call regarding the two outstanding issues. One is the stormwater bond reduction, another one relates to uh tree plantings and making sure that what is. What exists out there conforms to uh approvals. So anyways, there's a two separate issue that um will be advanced separately, albeit part of common discussions. With the homeowner consideration and the developer. I expect at the next meeting, we'll have a discussion. Um, about the stormwater component. We await for the detail from Lovac Associates that reflects. Uh, potential reduction uh in that bond amount owing to some of the the current concerns and and borne from emissions being valid. But right now, I think the 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 full value um. Of the bond of the security, this I think it was actually a bank passport that was uh placed for that project. Uh, it's still being held. Uh, all right. Would you like to introduce next item?
Go for it. You just keep going.
Uh, oh, hey, I I didn't realize I, that's a lot. We can skip that one. I talked about that in my uh. Forty-nine Sam West Road existing permits summary. There is a permit from the nineteen nineties for automobile repair. Um, at the sec, that is a zoning board of appeals permit. This reflects back to discussion we have with Tom Sinowski. And Jesse Saltmarsh. Sorry, there's no background.
There's a what? What was the use for?
Automobile repair. That was a Z B A special permit in the nineteen nineties.
The CBA was handling special permission.
Um, now, I've gone so far to research. The existence of that permit, I didn't look into any of the parameters surrounding it.
Um, just provide, I mean, it strikes me that you can just provide Jesse with a copy of that permit and he has a permit for the, the permit for the use there. Um, as long as he. If the if it has conditions, anything else, it's subject to those conditions.
Yep, uh, that's fine, um. I will share a copy of of that permit, so. Whether or not, I'm sorry, I'll share with Jesse, um, I don't see reference to. Uh, sales. So.
Um, well, but. He's not.
Not selling them there. Being sold online through a through a.
Yeah, he's just repairing them.
He's just repairing them.
So it's special permit.
I I guess I.
They transported to a lot where they sold the public auction. So the auctioneer has the has their permits there.
Does that sound like a familiar refrain? Have we heard that justification before?
Yeah, I have.
Whether you believe.
No, no.
Gonna happen, but.
I'm not trying to, I'm not even trying to throw any shade on this. I just wanna make sure.
I I mean, I guess my answer is. Well, my answer is this. They have a use permit to do auto repair. He's has every right to do auto repair on the property, subject to whatever conditions are in that. Uh, to the extent that he has. He obtains a used car license. I would expect, we can have it in your head when you see it on the agenda. Submit something from the planning board, which indicates that he doesn't have the right to. Sell any property or sell any cars from that location, so it can't be conducted at that location. Any select port members are listening right now when it comes in front of them. Um, I mean, they can't, it's gotta be a condition of the used car license that. You can have a used car license, but it's not to be conducting sales at that location.
That makes sense.
And I mean, other than that, it's an enforcement. I mean, I can't, I I don't. If what they're saying is we're gonna be repairing cars here, then it's the right to do it.
I I think that's the same logic that we. Uh, I should say, that at least was presented to the planning board. At a very large facility a couple years back, and that logic definitely generated debate about licensing. So, okay, I'll share that information. Thank you. Uh. Well, is that it?
No.
Master plan advisor committee update.
Well, you brought up one item earlier about the uh person resigning and another person being. Uh, put in, I would make a motion, Marcus Phelps, make a motion to appoint. Michael McMahon as the Economic Development Commission representative to the Master Plan Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I'll sing a second.
The roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
It's not, I.
Dave's been a high. Okay.
Thank you. So a couple other things, Master Plan Advisory Committee. Planning Board members, please put on your calendars, May fourth. It's a committee meeting and we are inviting the planning board to attend, so. There will be a briefing by Ken Camia and other members of the board. About the master plan, so you'll be. Aware and informed as to what is gonna be the master plan. Hopefully, we're gonna have. A draft of some kind by then.
Can you put on your calendar to remind me at the next board meeting before that?
Sure.
Okay.
And we're doing focus groups to beat the band. Uh, this Thursday at three P M in this very room, there'll be a group on natural resources and open space.
In this room?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, minutes, everybody looking up? Everybody's good? See? Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for February second, twenty twenty-three?
Uh, the way it's written on the minutes is February seventh. Which day? Which which meeting did we have that? The seventh.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Richard singer, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Come on, you do. You're with the program here.
You know what time it is? I already went to sleep.
An early meeting. Making most of the closing meeting.
Dave's been a second. All those in favor?
I.
Hey. Good night, everyone.